Did you do it again, did you not press start? There.
Wait a minute.
Need the voodoo work. We got noise, this is good. Good morning.
You just do the mub drafting store?
Alright.
You have to do the mub drafting on the highway.
What's that versus?
No, I just, oh, we're fine. Oh, that clock's gone a little bit fast. Yeah, it is. Good morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence? Ready, salute.
I present the citizens to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the great and precious law.
Thank you, please be seated. This time we'll take up our public comment period. This is the time when people are allowed to present comments on matters within our jurisdiction, but that are not on today's agenda. Please note, the Board will take no action on any items brought forward today that are not on today's agenda. I have some names here, excuse me if I don't pronounce them correctly. First, I have Mary Morton. Good morning. Either one.
My name is Mary Morton. I live at 119 South H Street in Tulare. I'm here with the Invest in Tulare County Community Coalition. When we formed, we didn't assume that we had all of the answers. We wanted to join together all of the organizations in this county who were already doing good work. We wanted answers about what this community really wants when it comes to healthcare. What we found through a scientific poll of Tulare County voters is that what the people of this county care about is that you, the county supervisors, spend their healthcare money in the way that it was intended. The voters told us that they're tired of you spending tobacco settlement funds on infrastructure when it was intended to provide us with adequate healthcare. The Tulare County Healthcare Enhancement Measure would dedicate existing tobacco settlement funds to healthcare so that this money can go where it is needed most, to the health of this community and not to buildings. This time of fiscal crisis is exactly the time to invest money to improve the health of our people, and you can do it without raising taxes. When we tried to get this on the ballot, not only did you refuse to perform your legal obligations, you even sued the two citizens who filed the initiative. We don't understand why you are fighting so hard to keep the people from voting on this. We urge you to do the right thing and put the Tulare County Healthcare Enhancement Measure onto the ballot. Put it to a vote of the people. Let the voice of the people be heard, and let the people vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the members of the public who aren't with this group, may I correct a few misstatements that were made? Your board brought no lawsuit against the originators of the initiative referred to. I did. The reason that I did is there is a statutory obligation for the county council to prepare a summary, a ballot summary, for a proposed initiative. I looked at the initiative and I determined that on its face it was unconstitutional. I brought an action before the court, asking the court to explain to me my obligations to go forward under these circumstances. And the court issued an injunction allowing me not to perform my duty. Thereafter, the proponents of the initiative dismissed their litigation. I don't know what that's supposed to have to do with your board, exactly, but I do think that the record should be clear and correct. The name of the case is Bales Lang, not the county of Tulare, versus Heron, H-E-R-R-O-N. It is a matter of public record. Anyone who wants to go check the court records can do so.
I'm Michelle Taylor. Morning.
My name is Michelle Taylor. And I live at 354 West Matheny Avenue in Tulare. I am a consumer of healthcare here in Tulare County. I have seen the downside of the healthcare system here. As a part county, people do not have much weight and resources. Many have to go without healthcare or depend on the public healthcare clinics for their care. Most premature deaths here are caused by chronic conditions that would be prevented by access to doctors and affordable medications. However, in Tulare County, these are not available to all people. I know you are not uncaring people. That your actions around the healthcare have not shown that it is time for you to invest help of the people in Tulare County. You can do this by placing the Tulare County Healthcare Enhancement Measure Its intended purpose, put the Tulare County Healthcare Enhancement Measure on the ballot. Let the voice of the people be heard. Let the people vote. Thank you.
Martin, I'm sorry, the last name's hard for me to read, Alvar?
Alvar.
Alvar.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
My name is Martin Alvar and I live at 354 Matheny Avenue in Tulare. Over the last several years, you've had chances to make decisions to improve the health of your constituents. You have always voted no, not to. At least you're consistent. As a result, our system was once bad, but it is now worse. We have half the medical professionals and hospital beds per person as a statewide average. We have higher rates of preventable diseases than the statewide average. We have lost hundreds of healthcare workers. We have lost two county house clinics, but it does not have to be that way. You have access to $5 million a year from the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement, which is supposed to be spent on healthcare. But you're spending it on infrastructure that is misappropriation. The same can probably be said about the way that you're misappropriating the Measure R money to buy railroad when the tax was intended to fix our roads. Like I said, you're consistent. Put the Tulare County Healthcare Enhancement Measure on the ballot. Let the voice of the people be heard, let the people vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cynthia Koval.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Cynthia Koval and I'm here to support our friends, the Tulare County Healthcare Workers. But overarching that, I'm with Healthcare for All California. And I'm here together today with two other members, Gary Gray, who is a pharmacist at Cuiadelta, and Ron Webb, who's a retired social worker at Cuiadelta. And I just wanted to give you a heads up, I know that this is a local concern countywide, but overarching this, as much as these people here are needing and wanting adequate healthcare, the way our system is set up, this is not an easy thing for the county, the city, any small government. What we propose is a single payer healthcare system that would provide adequate healthcare to every single California citizen. And I'd like to invite you all to our meetings, which are held monthly. Every, the first Tuesday of every month at Cafe 225, where the food is delicious and the company is even better. I think that there's a lot we can learn. There's a growing grassroots movement in support of single payer healthcare. And I ask you not to dismiss it as socialized medicine. Please learn about it first. It's as socialized as your local police department. This is something that's very doable and I'm proud and happy to have the opportunity today to speak with you. Thank you so much.
Gary Gray.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, members of the Board and then folks in the audience. A decade ago, I'm a member of a strong healthcare coalition that brought a million and a half dollars here into the state to look at health insurance reform. And what grew out of that 10 years ago was a option called single payer that would lower the costs for health insurance for everyone in the state. Businesses, 16 percent, hospitals, 23 percent, and physicians' offices, 33 percent. And over the years, this coalition has grown now to 3 million folks. California One Care, you can Google that, will lower the cost of insurance for almost everyone here in the state of California. Provide health coverage for every person and improve the quality and care of healthcare for everyone. As a spinoff from that study that was done, and it was cooperated by all of the universities here in the state, was that county governments too would save. And they predicted, and it's come true, here we are in 2010, this happened in 2000, that county budgets would be shorted. Healthcare expenses were growing at a rate that county governments could not continue to afford to fund healthcare. And so you've cut, year after year, you've cut, year after year, you've cut. And it doesn't take anyone up there, and as you're doing, you know, to figure it out, we have so much money coming in, let's cut services. So you've been in a reactive mode. And I'm suggesting that you learn about California One Care, include this county board of supervisors and the other 60 county boards of supervisors, and get behind California One Care. Two out of three physicians support California One Care and three out of four California voters support California One Care. It's a strong fiscal, responsible way to fund health insurance for California residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. That's all the names I have. Anybody else wishing to address the Board this morning in public comment period?
Excuse me, what was the question?
Oh, I was asking if anybody else wished to address us this morning.
Oh.
Yeah. We have, I have the names, but other people can come forward if they didn't sign in. So if anybody wishes to speak to us now, it'd be the time. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period and go to our consent calendar. There is one minor change on item six related to the address of the property in Ivanhoe. It should be 15893 rather than 15892. And with that correction, are there any other items which members of the Board want to handle separately? Yes? So it should stay the way it is?
Yes.
Alright. Okay. So I stand corrected. Entertained a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Innis, second, by Supervisor Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. And that will take us to our untimed items. Item number 27 is a presentation given by the Resource Management Agency regarding an overview of the Tulare County Transit System. Morning, Mr. Fussell.
Good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. I have before you this morning is a presentation regarding the Tulare County Area Transit System, or TCAT for short. I would also like to recognize, in your chambers this morning, we have Johnny Wong, who's the Division Manager in the Resource Management Agency, that has the oversight over this program at the division level. I have Dan Fox, who is the Transit Coordinator and can speak to more specifics about the operation of the transit system. And I also have Shirley Wallace, who is a Staff Service Analyst III, and she's been heavily involved in securing grant funding and other sources of money to operate the system. The transit system in Tulare County began in 1981, providing basic services within the county. Funding for the program came from the Transportation Development Act, or we affectionately refer to it as TDA, of 1981. And since the beginning of the operation of a transit system in Tulare County, it has always been operated by a contract entity. From 1981 to 2006, it was TransWest Specialties. In 2006, as a result of an RFP process, also in coordination with the City of Isolia and I believe the City of Tulare, the contractor is now MV Transportation Incorporated. In addition to MV Transportation and the system that they run on our behalf, we also work with Orange Belt Stage Lines, which is a common carrier service, and provides transportation to county residents as well between cities and communities in the county. The fare for that is basically the same as our fixed route, and so we just pick up the difference out of the transit fund for the additional cost of the system. And I provided to each of the Board members, or you should have in front of you, the countywide transit guide that incorporates the county transit system as well as all the city transit systems. And the schedule and the route for Orange Belt is within this guide. Also, it's identified that funds that are not spent on transit can be spent to fund street and road projects. So we are, we try to manage our revenue sources for the transit system very carefully in order to leave money available for streets and roads maintenance. And I think for 2009, 10, we're looking at probably in excess of $3 million that of money that can be spent on transit or is directed to be spent on transit is available for streets and roads purposes. This is a route map of the Tulare County Area Transit System. The county currently operates nine fixed routes and three dollar ride service areas. And again, in your transit guide is a more detailed description of those routes. The main producing routes are, is this route that's, routes 10, 20, 30, and 40, which is the route in yellow, the route in blue, light blue, the route in red down to Porterville, and then the blue route that's down here, coming up from South County up into the city of Tulare. And from all of these routes, you're able to make transfers through the city transit systems in order to move around within the cities. The fare structure currently is, on the fixed route, is a dollar fifty per ride. In addition to that, there is a transfer option within the city of Isolia to Route 1. Basically, that transfer is free if you're moving from the county system to the city system, and that's because the county's fare is higher than the city's fare. And in the case of moving from the city system to the county system, there's a 20, additional quarter that needs to be paid. And that's to cover the additional cost on the county's fixed route system. In addition, as I mentioned, we have the Orange Belt Common Carrier System that provides transit capability within the county, and the fare on that is the same dollar fifty per ride. And the dollar ride system that we have, the ride is 75 cents per trip. In addition to the fixed route system and the dollar ride system that's been operating for quite some time in the county, in 2007, with the assistance of funding from Measure R, the county implemented its Loop Bus, Loop Bus Program. In 2007, we had a summer route system which provided transportation from Ivanhoe to Isolia to the recreation park area. In addition, we had Loop Bus going between Goshen and Isolia, again, to the recreation park area. And then once they reached the city of Isolia, at the recreation park facility, they were then able to move around to the various youth centers within the city on the city's local system. We also have a, provide an off-season demand response. Apologize, I don't usually speak from notes, but I have them today. In which case, we, based upon requests by agencies that need to move youth from one area of the county to another area of the county, we provide access to the Loop Bus system. In 2007, there were 1,717 youth served with the Loop Bus. In 2008, the route was modified a little bit, added Patterson Track and also Lanell Camp, and moved the location for the drop-off point in the city of Isolia to the Manuel Hernandez Center. So we were attempting to pick up additional students in the county and bring them into Isolia for services. In addition, we still ran the Goshen to Isolia segment of the Loop Bus as well. And again, we have a, we had an off-season demand response. In 2008, we served over 3,200 youth. And then again, in 2009, again, the summer route system. This, in 2009, as a result of very low, if no productivity coming from Patterson Track, it was dropped from the route and still keeping Lanell Camp. So the route was from Ivanhoe to Lanell Camp to Isolia, with the drop-off point being the Boys and Girls Club. And again, still running the Goshen to Isolia segment, again, to the Boys and Girls Club. And it's still running the off-season demand response program. In 2009, the number of youth served dropped to 2,500. And we are gearing up to run the Loop Bus again in 2010. Some of the accomplishments of the overall transit system is we currently are serving 38 different Tulare County cities and communities. In 2005, the transit name was rebranded from Tulare County Transit, TCT, to TCAT, or Tulare County Area Transit. And we've also installed 20 benches and 28 shelters throughout the system. Additional accomplishments indicate, include creating individual route information flyers. And again, in your handout of the Comprehensive Transit Guide, are individual route guides for each of the routes in Tulare County. Started working on a CNG fuel conversion of the fleet. Installed a automatic vehicle location GPS system within the fleet so that we have an idea of where the buses are at at all times. Believe it also provides an opportunity for the driver, if there's an emergency, to notify the dispatch. A Drive Cam video system. We also installed security video, lighting, and fencing at the central road yard. We were having some issues with vandalism and theft at the road yard, so we were able to secure some grant funding to install some security out there. New radio system, and right now, we have new fare boxes that are on order. Additional compliments, accomplishments include a regional call center, one-stop call center for anybody in the county wanting to call in and find out how to access any of the transit systems, route information, et cetera. Also implemented the TPAS, Regional Pass, with the county as the lead agency. In this particular program... In this particular program, for $45 per month, you are able to get a pass that allows you to ride on any of the fixed route systems within Tulare County. So this way, you can move around through the county, and for $45, you can go from one end of the county to the other end of the county, and also ride on the various city systems as well. And before your Board, in I believe December, we had a contract renewal, which became effective on January of this year. And we also have an adds-on-buses program. Within the inventory, we have nine new compressed natural gas-powered vehicles. We're still running four diesel-powered vehicles, and we have three gasoline-powered vehicles. Here is a graph showing the ridership, and as you can see, ridership has been increasing over the last four years. You can see, this is the, the blue higher bars are the fixed route system, and the red bars is the dollar ride or demand response. And you can actually see we're beginning, we saw some decline in the demand response ridership with kind of a leveling off in, projected leveling off in 2009, 10. And the numbers for 9, 10 are actually estimate or projected numbers. And what we saw is a 70% increase in ridership between '06, '07 to what we're projecting in 9, 10. From '07, from '06, '07 to '07, '08 was a 23%, from '08, '09 was a 19%, and from 9, 10, from '09, '08, '09 to 9, 10 is a 16% projected. This graphic shows a breakdown of the growth that's occurred and the projected growth within the four main routes within Tulare County. The north route, the north county route is what we label as Route 10. The southeast county route is Route 40. The northeast county route is Route 30, and the south county route is Route Number 20. This graphic is, identifies what's been happening to our fare box ratio over the last four years. We have seen a steady increase in the fare box, the recovery of the fare box. We've seen approximately a doubling of the amount of money from the fare box over this period of time. And from 2007, '08, from '06 to '07, '08, we saw a 36% increase. From '07, '08 to '08, '09, a 25% increase. And from '08, '09 to our projected numbers for 9, 10, we're anticipating an 18% increase. Some of the funding sources to operate the transit system include the Federal 5311 Program, which provides capital for acquiring buses and operating expenses. The American, America Recovery and Reinvestment Act has provided funding for buses and new fare boxes. The Transportation Development Act Local Transportation Fund provides operating funds. And again, this is the money, the LTF, that if, if we don't have to use it all for transit, can be used for streets and roads purposes. We've been using the Measure R Program. The county has access to $500,000 a year for route expansion. The Proposition 1B, got to get this acronym correct here. Public Transportation Modernization Improvement and Service Enhancement Account provides funding for buses and other capital. And then the Proposition 1B California Transit Assistant Fund has provided security enhancements for the program. State Transit Assistant Fund provides funds that we use to, with some of our transfer agreements with other operators. And again, just reiterating that any excess in LTF can be used for streets and roads purposes. Obviously, one of the things that's happening with transit funding in the state of California is everything that's going on with the budget and the manipulation, the legislature, the governor's doing with the sources of money for streets and road maintenance, as well as transit, is beginning to concern us a little bit. And fare box revenues, which operating, which offset our operating costs. And what we've seen in fare box, let me find my page, is, again, substantial increases in those numbers since 2005. And we also have pass and token sales, which again, have been increasing since 2005. The other thing that is part of the program is, there are transfer agreements, some of which are funded with the STA Program, but balance of which is funded through the LTF. And that's where money is transferred from one agency to another agency if they're providing transit service with their system in another agency's area. An example would be, the community of Goshen is provided service by the City of Isolia. So there's an amount of value associated with that that's calculated, and that amount of money of LTF is transferred to the City of Isolia to operate that system, operate that program. Some of the things that we're working on and recommendations that we continue to work on is to maximize our Measure R funding on the higher-performing routes, which is the routes 10, 20, 30, and 40. Install an informational post on all TCAT bus stops. This would be providing information relative to the, you know, the route that you're on and the schedule, so that you know when you're at a transit stop, when the next bus is expected to rise, arrive, and the time that you would anticipate arriving at the next destination. Looking at instituting Sunday service on the higher-performing routes, again, this is 10, 20, 30, and 40. We're studying the opportunities to develop our own operations and maintenance facility for the TCAT system. Currently, MV Transportation, who is our service provider, is using the operation and maintenance facility that's available at the City of Isolia Corporation Yard for bus maintenance, and we're looking at providing our own facility to our contractor. Continue to encourage ridership growth through the marketing of the Tulare County Area Transit System. Continue the alternative fuel path for future TCAT vehicles, in other words, head more into CNG. That's the fuel of choice that we've landed on. And then, earlier, I indicated that the dollar ride fare currently for any rider is 75 cents. So we would look to be coming back to the Board with a recommendation that we increase that fare to $2.25, while at the same time, for the senior and disabled rider, keeping the same fare of 75 cents. And with that, any questions or discussion? Again, I have staff from the RMA here this morning to help answer some questions that I may not be able to respond to.
Supervisor Cox?
If I can, first, on the Measure R, if the Board will remember, this Board voted three years ago to take $125,000 of our $500,000 per year and dedicate that to the Loop Bus service. What I think this report doesn't show, and I think we shared with each of the board members, and as well as during our Board of Supervisors matters, the ridership this year is increasing exponentially. I would, I would say we had over 700 riders in the month of January. Haven't seen the February numbers yet. But because of the new, the new Loop Bus Program put in place this year, I expect to see that program double of what we've done in the past, over between 6,000 and 7,000 riders in the year. So there's an opportunity here, I think, to, as we look at at least the Measure R piece, and a lot of these other monies were, were kind of, have our hands tied. There's a certain way, we have to spend the money, there's no flexibility. With that Measure R piece of money that we have available to us, there is some flexibility. I'd like to see this Board increase that amount by $25,000 to $150,000 a year, remembering that the Measure R transit money rolls over. It's not like our regular budget money that goes away on July 1st, where every account balance is zero. Actually, I guess it's midnight of the day before, it's zero, to where any, any funds saved get swept to fund balance. In this case, these Measure R transit funds carry over to the coming years, and they accumulate and they earn interest. Right now, while my calculation could be wrong, we have in the bank, from what we've not used over the last three years, we should have around $600,000 or more. So I would like to see the Board increase the amount of money we dedicate to the Loop Bus System and encourage staff not to program out the entire $500,000. One of the cities, and I won't mention which one in our county, programmed their entire allotment for the year. They expanded the buses to fit that number for that year, and they find themselves in a position now where they're short. So since they programmed out to the full dollar amount, not expecting any growth or allowing enough for inflation, they find themselves now possibly having to cut back on the number of buses or the times or the days that certain buses run. So I would encourage staff to not program out the whole $500,000, to be conservative, and to expand routes on a, on a planned, scheduled rate to work ourselves up to that and use those, I'll call them reserves, that we've not spent wisely. Also, something that the Measure R funds have not been spent on, and I could have been added to the recommendations here, but I know it's already in the pipeline, is to add more benches and shade covers and weather covers. Brett, I know you have, probably have a number on the tip of your tongue, I know there's some planned already, and that is?
You know, it was about? Just received 11 new shelters, then we have benches, so we are putting those in, and you're right, they should have been identified on the recommendations.
So those are money, those are things that Measure R could pay for. We don't have to use our, our capital or operating money, we can actually use that Measure R money for one-time purchases of, for those bus stops and those covers and things of that nature. So I encourage our staff to look at like, at things like that, and not use other operating monies or monies that could be used to expand the system in another way, since we do have a reserve of those Measure Rs. So just a recommendation that we expand our fund for the Measure R Loop Program, and that we not program out the whole half a million a year.
Appreciate those comments, Supervisor Cox. The other thing that we do is we, as grant money is available to us, a lot of time, that money is one-time programs, and then they evaporate and go away, is we make those programs available for capital expenditures as well, so we don't get trapped in establishing an ongoing operating cost that when we either reach the cap of the money, like the Measure R, or the grant goes away, we can't then sustain it and then have to eliminate or reduce the program.
And I was just, Brett, I was just going to make a comment about the, the importance of the benches and shelters for the, to help increase the transit ridership. I know in the summer, it's important to have shade, and in the winter, it's important to have shelter from the rain, and always want to have a bench, and somewhere where people can go and feel comfortable while they wait for the transit system. I definitely see the need down in my area, so I would just like to reiterate the importance of that, so thank you.
Anybody else?
Post the schedule.
Post. Right, that's one of the items that I mentioned was the, you've seen it in the City of Isolia, it's like a tube that's on the post, and, and in it has the schedule, or a sign on the, on the, on the post that has the schedule, so that people can access that, access the schedule at the stop.
And you only need a doctorate degree in order to read it.
Just, just one comment I wanted to make, that, just for the benefit of those who might not know about this, is that the idea of having extra money, we have a requirement of fare box ratio, I believe it's 20%.
10% in the rural system.
10% in rural system. So if people think, well, why aren't we just doing more on transit, we still have to meet this minimum requirement of 10%. And when we have a assessment, that we do public hearings every year in our Tulare County Association of Governments, this is covered extensively, and people will come forward with proposals to, which we are, then are evaluated and determine whether or not they are feasible. The feasibility is really predicated upon this issue of getting to that 10% fare ratio. Is that correct?
Yes, in fact, the LTF money has to be spent first to meet unmet transit needs, and then it can be used for streets and roads purposes. So you've got that source, but you also have an obligation to meet, as you indicated, the minimum fare box ratio, which for our rural system is 10%. And we have been able to grow that fare box ratio from slightly less than 12% to almost 15% over the last few years.
And the reason I say that is that some folks might say, well, why, how can a county justify transferring money over to roads, streets and roads, if there's still unmet transit needs? It's that problem of meeting the fare box ratios. Thank you very much. As I understand it, you're, we're here just to receive your report, the recommendations on here are action items, we're just to receive the report. I would like to just simply say to Mr. Cox's request, that, again, this is something we were talking about as we do our budgeting process, this is not a mid-year modification, we're really looking at our next, next budgeted cycle. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the report.
And make the motion to accept the report.
Motion from Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Innis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
We will now take up our timed item, 9:30 timed item. Item number three, Innis is a public hearing, request from the Resource Management Agency to adopt, find, determine, declare, and resolve various things relative to an imminent domain proceeding on Road 108.
Yes, good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director of the Resource Management Agency, and my PowerPoint presentation, please, Michelle. Thank you. The item before you this morning is a public hearing for the Board to consider a resolution of necessity for the Road 108 reconstruction project. Unfortunately, the Road 108 name is a little bit confusing, because you've been dealing with Road 108 between the City of Tulare and the City of Isolia for our road widening project. This is on a northern segment of Road 108, north of the City of Isolia, basically from about a quarter mile south of Avenue 336 up to its northerly terminus, just to help avoid confusion. We are requesting that the Board of Supervisors conduct a hearing, adopt a resolution of necessity for this Road 108 reconstruction project. The affected property owners this morning are Floyd D. Campan, Gail C. Campan, and the Floyd and Gail Campan Living Trust. The assessor parcel numbers are 048-100-011 and 048-100-07. The Board must make the following findings relative to the adoption of a resolution of necessity, that the public interest and necessity require the project, that the project is planned and located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, that the property described is necessary for the project, and lastly, that the offer required by Government Code Section 7267.2A, together with the accompanying statement of and summary of the basis of the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owner or owners of record, and the offer and accompanying statement and summary complied with the requirements of said Government Code Section. Here's a location map of the properties that we're dealing with. Again, Road 108 comes up and stops at the north property line of the Campan Properties, and directly due north of the City of Isolia. The project description is to completely reconstruct Road 108 from approximately 1,320 feet or a quarter mile south of Avenue 336 to its northerly terminus for a total length of approximately 2,500 feet. And here's a graphic showing the right-of-way areas that need to be acquired. Campan Property on this side extends down to a quarter mile south of Avenue 336. You'll notice that on the west side of the road, the area being acquired is 50 feet from the section line. And then on the other side of the road, from the center line of Avenue 336 north to the terminus is 10 feet. The road's been offset over time, rather than being centered on the section line. And the project purpose is to reconstruct Road 108 in to order to increase its traffic carrying capacity, and also to improve safety. This project, as I will get into in later slides, is related to the Mineral King Dairy Project, which was approved by your Board back in 2004. And through that special use permit process, it was identified that this was the access to be used, to access that dairy project, and that the vehicles associated with the dairy operation, the road could not sustain the carrying of those vehicles. In addition, being an old road, which I'll talk about a little bit later, is narrow pavement width, and from a safety perspective, needing to provide two 12-foot lanes and shoulders in order to provide for the safe passing of vehicles that come opposing each other. As I just mentioned, the Board of Supervisors approved Special Use Permit Number 03030 for the Mineral King Dairy Project on November 30th of 2004. There was a permit condition, which was number 35, that requires all the mitigation measures that are included in the environmental document be implemented. Mitigation Measure Number 3.14.5 requires that the Mineral King Dairy Project provide right-of-way and improvements to Road 108 from Avenue 336 to its northerly terminus. right-of-way and improvements to Road 108 from Avenue 336 to its northerly terminus. Shortly after the Board's action, Jay Taveldi, representing Mineral King Dairy, entered into a long-term deferred improvement agreement with the county of Tulare for the implementation of that mitigation measure. And that long-term development improvement, deferred improvement agreement requires that the improvements be carried out with identified principles for road improvement projects associated with the Mineral King Dairy permit, which was, again, is Exhibit C attached to the documents. This Exhibit C requires Mineral King Dairy to obtain all the required right-of-way for Avenue 328. Actually, that's incorrect. The document says 328, it should read Road 108. There was a typo in the original document. It also goes on to state that if Mineral King Dairy is not able, through good faith negotiations, to attain this right-of-way, then they should notify or shall notify the Road Commissioner so that the county may acquire the right-of-way at MKD's cost. Mineral King Dairy attempted to negotiate the right-of-way, acquisition of the right-of-way, and was not successful. On December 15th of 2005, the RMA received a request from the legal counsel representing Mineral King Dairy that the county begin the process to acquire the right-of-way through its powers. On January 10th of 2006, staff came before your Board with this request, and the Board authorized staff to begin the process to acquire this right-of-way, including the adoption of a resolution of necessity if necessary to complete the project. What's important in this particular case is that this existing right-of-way is prescriptive in nature, in that we go back into our old road files, we cannot find where the county ever received a easement deed for this road right-of-way. In their prescriptive rights perspective, basically, the county only has the right, or the public only has the right, to travel on that section where that's currently paved. Our county minimum right-of-way standard width is 60 feet, and so we need to not only acquire the area that's developed and prescriptive where the pavement is, but in order to provide for the features that I discussed earlier for, to support the traffic that's on the road as well as the safety of the vehicles, we need to develop a full standard county road, which would have two 12-foot travel lanes and either two or four-foot shoulders. In order to do that and have adequate space for drainage and clear separation, we need a 60-foot right-of-way, which is the county minimum standard. And we plan to reconstruct the road along its existing alignment, so we are not trying to move the road, we want to rebuild the road where it currently exists, but to county standards. The offer package that's required by the Government Code was made to the Campanes on May 1st of '09, and then again on January 6th of 2010. And again, that package did consist of an offer not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be just compensation for the property and interest to be acquired. The notice required by Code of Civil Procedure Section 1245.235 was mailed to the Campanes on February 17th of this year, and again, the law requires that it be mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. This morning, staff was recommending that your Board conduct a hearing regarding this resolution of necessity, and then based upon the evidence presented to you in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the findings that I had first stated when I began my presentation. And with that, I'd respond to any questions that the Board may have regarding this request.
Are there any requests?
I just have one question, Brett. Have we actually spoken with the Campanes, or are these property owners that have been non-responsive? I'm just curious, as we've gone through several eminent domain proceedings, and every situation seems to be different.
Yes, and Robert Newby is in the audience and probably can answer more specifically, but yes, we've made numerous attempts to try to reach the Campanes and negotiate the acquisition of this property, and they have not been of the mind to work with the county on this issue.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Time for the public to, in regard to this matter, to come forward. Please state your name and address. Anyone here today? Seeing no one, close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board for action.
Conversation, for the conversation.
One last question, I guess, as I look through the staff report, I see letters from 2005, which are the responses that went back and forth. Do we have anything newer than that, other than we made our required offers?
Nothing newer, other than we made our required offers, but nothing that I'm aware of from the property owner or their legal counsel.
And no response to the latest offers that were made. Okay, thank you.
Entertain a motion.
The motion approved.
Motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ashida. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Now, it's been a long process, but obviously there have been some continuing circumstances here concerning the rights of way, but thank you. And now we come to our last untimed item before we go into closed session, and that would be item number... Oh, did I skip that? Pardon me. Go back to the first part of our agenda. I forgot our Board Supervisor matters, and I'll begin with Supervisor Ennis. Anything today, Mr.?
Yes, last Saturday, we had a kind of a mini gang summit in Porterville. Kathy Pearson, who's the principal of Sierra High School, or Citrus High School, planned a kind of a small summit there at Santa Fe School and the Heritage Center in Porterville, kind of conjunction together. And we used a loop bus, which brought in young people from around the county, Carabel area. I think it was 28 people that was brought in by the loop bus. It was over 100 people, young people there. And it was kind of neat. I spent a couple hours over there, and, you know, they had a little obstacle course set up on tricycles, and the kids had to maneuver through there, and had ping pong contests, frisbee throwing, had donut-on-a-string eating. I'd never seen that done before, but it was quite interesting.
How'd you do?
They had, looked like a big bounce house, but it was set up for boxing, and had these gigantic gloves, and the kids would get in there and go after each other. Had face painting, and they had the gym, of course, set up for time shooting of baskets, and they had cup stacking contests, which I entered into and did pretty well for an old guy. But, you know, in conjunction, it was part of this mini gang grant, and the young people from Sierra High School were kind of being the mentors, and they were more or less running it, and the kids all had their Step Up shirts on, and was very proud, and I think it was really, turned out well, and was well-accepted by the young people of Porterville, and new friendships probably made. And the number-one thing is to keep kids, give them something to do and to keep them out of the gang activity, so money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Ashida?
I want to remind everyone that we have our Step Up Conference in Lindsay at McDermott Center on Thursday, September, excuse me, March 11th, and it starts at nine o'clock. We're expecting up to 1,000 people to attend this event, and whoever can make it is more than welcome to come by and see what the Step Up event's all about. I've been asked to speak this Saturday at the California Spring Republican Conference addressing the issue of water and how it affects the current water problems we have on the west side of California and this bond that's coming up, how the whole water issue is impacting Tulare County and the east side of the valley. So I'll be sitting on a panel, which will run from 10 to noon this Saturday, given probably the Tulare County perspective of the whole water issue. That's all I have.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
I just wanted to bring up two things. First of all, I will have the privilege of being a judge at the Tulare County History Day competition or contest, and that's going to be this Friday at the Tulare County Office of Education. Really looking forward to that. It's a great opportunity for the youth of our county to showcase their talents and their grasp and understanding of historical materials, so that should be very exciting. And then also, this weekend on Saturday at the Mooney Grove History of Farm Labor Museum is the Allensworth exhibit, Discovering Allensworth, and that exhibit takes place from, I believe, 2 to 4 at the museum, and I will be attending that, and it should be a great exhibit and a great showcase of a unique jewel in our community.
Supervisor Cox?
I'll also be attending the Allensworth Open House event, and I have a happy occasion to announce today. Get it up on the screen. Logan Wesley Martinez, born Friday afternoon at 4:51 PM, eight pounds, nine ounces, that was grandchild number nine.
Congratulations.
And we spent the weekend watching the other, the two little girls, and that's why I'm so tired today.
Supervisor Cox, if we were my Rotary Club, this probably would be a bell ringer, but congratulations.
Or a cause for a fine of some kind.
That's what I have in mind. Just want to say from District 4 that this afternoon, 4 o'clock, we have a rather unusual event happening. First off, the soccer team, the Dinuba Varsity Soccer Team, won the Valley Championship, which is the second Valley Championship this year, this school year at Dinuba High School. But beyond that, they defeated a team that was highly ranked in the state, and so consequently, Dinuba today at 4 o'clock is hosting a state championship game. Dinuba is ranked fourth in the state of California, will be playing a school from El Monte in Southern California, and you'd all be welcome to come there. 4 o'clock this afternoon at Dinuba Stadium, hosting state championship for the varsity soccer team. So I assume we'll probably have them coming by us in a while to honor them at our own meeting. And with that, then I will go to our last timed item, which is item number 28, and turn this over to our county administrative officer.
Thank you, Chairman Worthley. At your request, I bring this item forward. It discusses the need to formalize some policies that we either don't have in writing or that we have in writing that have needed to be updated for some time. You know, I was thinking about this request last night as I was working on the budget at my kitchen table. You know, we're going through historic economic downturn. Our revenues that we're looking at potentially for next year reflect a $15 million drop or 11% drop in a matter of two years, and the pressure that that puts on organizations. What we're currently going through is we're being inundated with PRA requests from news organizations, unions, and vendors. Our staff's being, due to the situation, the economic downturn and the uncertainties, there's an enhanced level of stress claims and personnel matters that are taking up a lot of time. Our departments are doing more with less, and will probably have to continue to do less with less. And I've cited morale issues. What this, this agenda item will do is speed up a process that I wanted to address when I first came here, and I've mentioned it to Board members along the way. I've wanted to update all of our administrative regulations, policies, and what have you, the ones that either were in writing, like I said, or have never been put in writing. So of the 37 administrative regulations that we had when I first came back as a county administrative officer, we've revised eight. Seven on the agenda November 3rd, 2009, and the last one on January 26th, 2010. As a part of this review, we've determined that of the 37, 10 did not need to be updated. Nine were integrated into personnel roles. One was deleted, and nine have yet to be finished. So at this point, I apologize for not having these done sooner. They should have been finished. Having sat through a meeting regarding the update of our auto-use policy and losing an hour of my life in that meeting, I realized that the tack that we've taken, trying to get as much input from as many departments as possible and come to a consensus, has created a paralysis of analysis and has extended this process much longer than it should have. Policies that are, that need to come forward, another good example is our IT policy. We've talked about that for some time. We created our IT department, boy, what is it now? Two years ago. And we've talked about the need for an IT policy, how it will help the department, and this collaborative reach-out, let's everyone come to a consensus effort, has extended that policy. It has not come to this Board yet. It will soon come on March 23rd. An unfortunate example of, again, paralysis of analysis and pulling the trigger on some issues. Yet to be coming, that we've talked about, will be a cash policy, a debt policy, and a reserve policy. Policies that we, fiscal policies that we desperately need and should have in place that will help us when we do our annual borrowing and other things of that nature. So I wanted to, I just wanted to put this in perspective in terms of what this will do. It will, it will address issues that have come to our attention, that's taken our attention away from constituent matters, and that's extremely unfortunate. You know, we are doing a lot of positive things at the county, and something like this that will, that potentially affects perceptions in a negative way is something that we have to put behind us. So we are putting the foot to the pedal on these policies, the policies that I talked about, and the policies affecting employee reimbursements, your reimbursements, and to make sure that they are, clarity, we have it in writing, it's something we should have had in writing before, we will formalize it. And what I recommend at this time, as a part of the agenda item, is to, is to accept your direction and push staff, much greater than I have up to this point, to get these policies done that address meals, mileage, and everything else that needs to be addressed. We want to make sure that whatever policies we have conform with the Brown Act, the existing policies we have, and I'll make this statement, conform with the Brown Act and with the IRS. They've been approved indirectly by being funded by our county council and our auditor controller. And in the event that there's any confusion about the clarity of our interpretation of the Brown Act, we'll take a strict interpretation of the Brown Act. And finally, at this time, we will suspend the practice of eating together as a group of three or more members unless they are doing so at ceremonial occasion or otherwise permitted under the Brown Act. And I'll take any questions you have at this time.
Are there any questions, TAO? No questions. I'm glad to see this come forward. You know, we're all aware there have been some unwritten policies that I've been assured by the last, for the last five years by our county council that because of the 20 years or so of history, that we're fine. I'm glad that we'll finally see these in writing, look forward to actually working on these as we move forward. Some of the financial policies that concern me are also, are how we handle the monies when we sell properties and as we purchase properties as well. I think there's some unwritten understandings and policies that we need to have in writing as to where those monies are banked and how they're dealt with for future building projects that the county needs to embark on. And coming up here in the next few years, we're going to have to start thinking very seriously about buildings that we build and where they're going to be built and how big they'll be, how do we plan for the future. So as we move forward, that I'd like to see some of those, you know, financial, fiscal issues covered as well.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
I just want to make the comment that I'm glad to see that we're looking at the, all of the administrative regulations. I think that's important, and I also think that based on the perception in the public, having things in writing and just things that are formal policies, I think that's a very important thing, so thank you for taking this forward.
Any other comments?
I too would like to just make that same comment, that coming out of the business world, when you hire somebody, they have a job description, look at it, they know what they can and can't do, the employee signs it, administrator signs it, and then there's no questions asked. That's what I want, too. I want to know exactly what I can and cannot do as a Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Am I the last one?
Don't feel obligated.
Well, I think it comes to the surprise that, to me, after serving five years, that many of these policies that have been, have been general practice for the Board for 30 years have never been reduced to writing. So it's time these policies to be reduced to writing, so.
I'll entertain a motion then to...
I move.
...the resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. The votes are unanimous. You have your... You have your instructions, Mr. Russo, and at this time, we will go to closed session items, Council?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Your Board's Items A through G are on for closed session, Items B and C are off agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you very much.